Hello, thank you for watching Toronto TV. Today our guest is Sandra Young Rocco. Hello Sandra.
Hello, hello.
Hello Joseph.
I know you're a migrant from Hong Kong. Can you tell us about your journey of immigration? When did you come here? Why did you come here?
That means you give away all the age, but that's okay. Actually, I was very young when I moved here. I moved here in 1968. I was the first year in school. After that, because Hong Kong was not so stable at that time, my mom and dad thought that moving here would be better. Because we have four brothers and two sisters. We were all musicians. We all played piano. We had three piano players and one violin player. My mom thought that Toronto would be better because there is a Royal Conservatory of Music. Because of that, we came here to Toronto instead of going to Wango. Actually, Wango would have been better for my mom and dad because they had a lot of friends there. They were close friends and close to Hong Kong. But because of the Royal Conservatory, they decided that moving here to Toronto would be better.
As we know, you have 20 years like a politics life. So would you mind to introduce why you are interested in this field? And what's your achievement? What made you so excited?
Well, actually, I'll start off with a little background. Because I've grown up here. Of course, I grew up here, studied here. Then I joined the University of Toronto, the Faculty of Music. I graduated, music graduate. And I joined the Royal Conservatory, ARCT, in the Conservatory. Then I came out to play music, as you probably know. But then, I think after a little while, because I was very young and started playing music. Actually, I was in sixth grade and started playing music. I taught the younger children in the neighborhood to play piano. I think playing music is good in a sense, it's very satisfying. You know, seeing the children play piano is good. Seeing their parents happy, is happy. But at the same time, I was going backwards within the community, the world news, the world news. I think I'm falling behind because what you talk to the children. You talk about cartoons, playing, where to eat. You don't have a conversation with the adults who can talk about the world news. Then I decided to come out and stop playing piano and come out to do other things. Initially, I thought, what can I do? Because my whole life is music. Then I knew I wrote down very quickly because I played piano very quickly, so I wrote down very quickly. Then I thought, okay, I can write down very quickly. I can come out and do administrative work using a computer, teach myself how to do. Then I came out to find... Initially, my job was related to computers. Initially, I worked for Computerland. Then I worked for Unisys, a big computer company. Then it was within the administration. But I'm a person who likes to learn. I like to learn, you know. As much as I can learn, I like new things because I think it's very interesting, right? Then I learned a lot of marketing. Because I worked in the marketing department. So I did a lot. Then I changed to have someone ask me to work together in a company that does international business, trade and business. And it has a very interesting... It has a company that has several things. One thing is to sell very straight Egyptian Arabian horses. Very rare. Straight Egyptian Arabian horses for breeding purposes. Very expensive. Those horses. But many people use it as a tax shelter. They invest into it. So I sort of learned about investment through these straight Egyptian horses. But then at the same time, my boss is very interested in squash. Playing squash. Then he ended up getting the three-year world title. He can sponsor for three years. Then it was with the best man squash player and female squash player. Then we got to Malaysia, to Hong Kong and different places to meet. So it was really interesting. In fact, that's how I learned to play squash because of that. So I needed to learn how to play it. If not, it would become not familiar. It would be hard to communicate with those people. Then I think it's good, it's very interesting. Through that experience, I learned a lot about international trade development, business development. Talking to other countries, seeing their interests. Then I was also involved with immigration. Bringing people over, how to help them settle in to Canada, to find a school, find a house. So I also think that within my own period of time, I went out and learned a lot of things. There are a lot of different things and I like different things. If you ask me to do the same thing every day, I think I get really bored. So I came out and learned. Then my politics is actually... They are recruited to City of Vaughan. I actually do it very happily. The woman said, "Oh, I know there is a job. They need a really good administrator." Then she said, "Try it." Then I told her initially, I have no interest in politics. No interest at all, right? Then she said, "Try it." Then I went home and thought, hmm, does it work? Then I thought, if I don't try it, I will never give myself a chance to know whether I like it or not. If I try it, at least I can try it. If I don't like it, then I leave. That's the way I think. Yeah, I guess I'm in a position, I'm lucky in the position that I'm not really working to survive. I'm uncomfortable, right? Then I said, "Okay, I'll try it." So that's how I got into City of Vaughan. Then I started there. And then that's where I met my husband. My husband is at that time a city councillor. He was in the senate. He worked for more than ten years there. Then I thought, "Okay, let me try." I think he demonstrated to me that politicians are not all bad. People always say that politicians are all lying, doing this, doing that. I didn't know that. Then I said, "Okay, let me try." But I think he put his heart and soul into helping people, helping the society, to make things better, right? And I thought, oh, it's good, it's interesting. And it actually, yeah, because it relates back to our living, our everyday living, right? Then I said, "Ah, it's not bad." Then it was like this. My husband, in 2003, had a provincial election. The provincial election, he won the provincial. So he became the MP of Thornhill. Well, his position obviously was open. But because of his position, he worked for twenty years there. So once he left, everyone could go in. You know, once a position is open after many years, everyone wants to go in. At that time, there were more than ten people participating in the election. Then I didn't plan it. I was helping my husband run his campaign. Then I said, "Okay, I'm deep in the water to help him run." But then, I think at the last minute, many people called me, "Run, run." I said, "No, no, no." I said, "A politician is more than enough." I said, "Don't be so many." Then, at the last minute, my husband told me, "You should really consider." Because, you know, he said, "Yeah, you did so much." And at that time, I was also very busy, involved within the community. I was the president of the Rape Payers Association. I was on his Arts and Culture Committee in City of Vaughan. I was on Race Relations. So there were already many different committees involved in this Wong Si.
What opinion?
Yes, just before, actually, signing up. Then I thought, I looked at the list of people who joined to run the election. Then I looked at each person. Then I said, "Is there anyone on this list who I think will represent us well?" That's really what I was trying to think. And I thought, all the people, none of them have heard of it. None of them are involved in the community. Nobody was... They entered for whatever reason. But it wasn't because of... They really did a lot of things in the society, helped a lot, anything. Then that's the reason why I decided to add my name in. Actually, I put my name in fifteen minutes before the closing. Then I said like this. That year was particularly difficult because the 2003 election, because we just... You remember the provincial and municipal overlap election. Then I had to finish wrapping up my husband's election before I could start my election. It became everyone started from that time. It was already started in January, everyone was doing their job.
Knocking doors.
Yes, yes. I ended up being, for three weeks, running my election. That was really all of this, three weeks. Then I decided, three weeks, I have to work very hard. I know all the issues. I was helping out my husband, so I know all the issues. It's a matter of talking to people. Then I would knock on doors every day, talk to people. And that's how I ended up being elected.
That's a very good trial.
It was good. I mean, it was good because it makes you work hard. Especially, you can lose weight, it's the best. I'm telling you. Knocking on doors every day. But, you know, I'll give you one little story, it was funny. Then I had a time during that period, I was knocking on the door. There was a student, probably twenty-something years old, was working at home. Then he opened the door. Then I told him, "Oh, you know, I'm here because of the election." Then he looked at me and said, "I don't care about the election." You know, he said, "These..." Just now, he had finished the provincial, but the people wanted to open the door. There's no reason for to get that, you know, they said this all the same. And I told him, I said, "No, it's not all the same." I said, "In fact," I said, "The first election, municipal election, is more important than provincial and federal." Because all the level is the one level that actually touches on your lives, okay? Whether it's picking up garbage, whether it's a tansuit, whether it's providing recreation programs or road improvement, any of those things developed are at the municipal level. They make a decision. So I said, "You should always elect the municipal." Because the person that you elected, he will represent a voice at that level. So I said to him, "It's very important." I said, "It's more important than provincial and federal." Then I told him, "This is funny." Then the funny thing was, after the election, I actually got an email from this person. Okay, he actually emailed me. I don't remember his name, right? But he emailed me, he says, "I'm not sure if you remember me," he says, "but you knocked on my door and you told me the reason why municipal election is so important." And he said, "In fact, this is the first time I actually went and voted, and I voted for you." So just that was very satisfying. At least I have influenced that person. It doesn't matter what, but if I influenced that person, I think municipal election is important and it helps people. And that's the thing that we want to get out there. We want people to understand the importance of election, the importance of helping people, that is the biggest thing.
Okay, I'll switch back a little bit. This is a mom, this is a wife, this is a mom, okay, a politician, alright? Then I want to ask, your husband is Italian?
Yes.
So this is a marriage between two races, alright? So, is there any difficulty, is there any suitable date?
No, because, well, part of the reason, yeah, I grew up here. Then I'm already westernized. In fact, my mom always said, "You all look like ghosts." Even though, really not, but that's the way, you know. But I think the other thing is because because we grew up here, we're used to communicating with others. So that part is fine. And I think Italians and Chinese have a lot of customs that are very alike.
Yes, they have customs, they have different languages.
Yes, family, that's very important. Their two cultures are very much alike. So it's not different. I think it was very easy to adapt.
Okay. Rebecca.
I'm the person inspired by you and influenced by you as well. Now I understand why the municipal level is more important because it's more intimate.
Yes.
I think it's very important.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the election. Because you're Sandra Young Rocco. You know, one, I know Italy is a big population. Would you be Chinese, but your husband is Italian? You also carry an Italian last name. Does it help with your election?
Well, definitely, it has helped. Especially in 2003, you know. Because even though I'm running, but because I have this last name Rocco, obviously makes it a lot easier. It's not definite, but at least it's easier for all. It's a plus, it's a bonus for all because I have this last name. Although, although it's funny, if people haven't seen me and if they know my name, it's Sandra Rocco, they expect to see an Italian. Then they go, "They don't like it." I've had a lot of people say that to me. I go, "Yeah, no, I said, I marry into Italian." But, yes, but then, my district has many Italians. But in 2010, the OMB changed our boundary. I forget if you know, do you remember that? Because OMB changed the boundary, my district moved north instead of across. So it became north of Highway 7. That's where I was. Then there were many Italians in my district. So in fact, my district, what I represent now, most are Italians, Soviets, Chinese are now more. Initially, there was no, in the first few terms, there was no Chinese at all. But because we are developing more and more, there are more and more new houses, there are more Chinese, and you know, Markham is empty, Richmond Hill is empty. Then people moved over to our side, Wong Si side. So now it's starting to become more Chinese. Most are basically Muslim, Sultate, that's more. So my area is not so many Italians. There are many Italians and Soviets, more.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Yeah, Sandra, as we see from your picture and background, it's very beautiful and lots of contemporary new architectures. As we know, you are the councillor of Ward 4, right? Can you describe what kind of area it is? Is that combined like residential or business or carry on law for exciting things like a park or everything, right? Can you describe a little bit?
Absolutely, yeah. So Ward 4, I am actually very lucky. All of this ward, in fact, has a combination, a combination of everything. Also, the ward said, for example, next Ward 5, it also has residential, basically a residential. But all of this ward, it has a whole fund. So north of all of this border, basically high bathers step all the way up to Test and Row. So Test and Row Baths is all the way across, go west across to Duffin, which is a residential, okay? But then I also have a lot of industrial. See, Wong Si, one of the biggest, I guess, the biggest positive for the height because we have a huge industrial base. And that's the reason why the taxes are less. We don't need to pay as much because of the fact that we have a huge industrial area. We also have a huge manufacturing base here. So a lot of that area, although, yes, Concord is in my area. Concord is the industrial area of across Canada. It's one of the biggest industrial areas. So I have that. And then on top of that, I have the downtown. But it wasn't a downtown when initially, 2003, it wasn't a downtown, it was basically box shops. Like you had a Walmart and had a Home Depot, and that's about it. And also, it was like Brant Field, right? It was very home day and everything. But then because before my husband moved to provincial, he started the Spadani York subway extension committee to fight to get the subway up to this Wong Si side. So as you know, that city only goes to Toronto. You know, the border is basically Toronto and that's it. All of them made a case and he started that whole process. And when I took over and I became the chair of the subway extension committee. And we fought very hard and luckily, the provincial government supported us and was able to give us that money. So we got the money. So in the budget of March 2006 is when we got the money to actually build the subway to come all the way to Vaughan. So Wong Si is the only city that has that city downtown. Nobody else has it. So that's the reason why you see what you see behind me is because of infrastructure. The infrastructure, you have a subway, you need people to live there, you need people to be there and use the subway, otherwise there's no point in having a subway there, right? So that really helped us kick-start the whole development of the downtown. So the downtown area would be basically 400 to the west side, 407 on the south side. I would say up to Langstaff also on the north and then east all the way to about Creditstone, the CN Rail. That's basically our downtown area, so Jane Highway 7, that whole area. And if you combine now, you go there, you don't see any buildings like that at all. This is the type of buildings you're going to see and you're going to see a lot more. Yeah, there are a lot of residential development, a lot of office building, there are a few, and there will be more coming in. We have hotel, entertainment. One of the things I'm working on is a performing arts, cultural and innovation campus. There is a downtown though. So we're going to really bring in a lot of the arts and culture into the downtown as well.
Because I see road congestion and tall buildings. A whole forty-plus stories, am I?
Yeah.
Highly populated, condensed area.
It is a condensed area and that's the reason why we're really slowly trying to change the minds of all these citizens to say, use the public transportation instead of getting into the car. And this is a slow transition. My gummy convinced the people to get out of the car. But the only way to get out of the car, and I said that over and over again, is as long as you have proper connection between east and west and north and south, the people will take it. Because if you don't have a timely, efficient connection, who wants to stand in a bus stop for however long? Especially in the weather. Exactly. You go there, it's fine, the weather is always good, so it doesn't matter, right? But when you're here, it's not the same. So we are doing a lot of transportation. So you see the Viva Transit, the York Region, the investment in Viva Transit, or the subway, Gold Transit, we're doing a lot of improvement on that. And we're getting all the different types of buses to connect to all of them. So that's going to hopefully start getting people to think about not utilizing car and especially, you know, the cars are so expensive. You know, who wants to pay for the cars if you can't actually get into a subway, get down to somewhere? Between all of them, you know, to downtown Union Station, it only takes about, say, fifteen minutes. And that's it, which is pretty good. You know, it's very quick and you're connected. We are actually connected to all the financial district, all the downtown, all the way to Union Station. So many people, even when they go down to... Now there's no Covid, but before Covid, people go to Air Canada Centre to watch the broadcast. They'd rather take a subway than to go find a place to park. Parking, at least thirteen, fifteen, twenty, just to park. You know, it's very expensive.
Twenty-five now.
Driving is so easy. Yeah, we need to educate our people.
We do, it's a slow process.
Yeah, the transportation, the infrastructure.
Yeah, yeah, it's not as easy. I mean, I guess it's for all of them, it's easier to understand because coming from Hong Kong, we see it. I mean, I'll find Hong Kong, I would never get into a car. I would get into any public transportation because it's so popular there, right? You know, it's not like that yet. And we need to educate the people that actually put the infrastructure in place. And we also need to educate the citizens to be able to give them a halt. Let's put the cars away, let's get into that public transit.
Especially, the gas is so expensive.
Yeah, that's the other thing, is you got to make it affordable. You want affordable, there's nobody who wants to... I mean, in Hong Kong, you can pay a dollar. But here, you...
Here, you can pay a dollar. A Canadian dollar. Six times more.
Yes, right.
Another question is, but you know, the municipal council is elected by constituents. Basically, there is no boss. Even mayor is not your boss, right? I've heard about some councils that are fighting, it's very important. You've done twenty years in the municipal council. How do you work with your fellow councillors?
It's been actually, for Wong Si, it's been pretty good. I have to say that we've been respectful. I think the biggest word is being respectful. I think some of the other city, you know, other municipalities that I've heard of, they're fighting it's just because they don't respect each other, they don't respect... One thing that we all have to remember, even though they are elected as a politician, yes, you have your opinions, but so does everybody else. And you must respect everybody's opinion. You may not agree, but you need to respect and you need to listen. And then you make your decision. No one can influence you to say you need to make a decision. But that's my principle anyway. I listen to, I listen to people talking, I listen to experts, I listen to colleagues. And then I'll make my decision based on the facts that I get. Sometimes, yes, there are politicians that get swayed by whether it's a developer or somebody because he only approves development or whatever. And they will try to sway you, they will do other... And I've always said, I don't care who you are. You can be my best friend, but I will take every situation on its own merits. And I have to look at it from a planning perspective. Does it fit into this area? Is it the right height? Is it the right density? Is it the right shape? Is the architectural nice? Like all those has to complement whatever is already existing. That's all the principle. And I think part of the reason why I can do that is because I think I honestly go back to Ogogo Yama, Ogogo education. Because of my music education, I'm much more open and much more creative in the way I think. So hold us see, the politician, they tend to be, you know, either they've taken politics or political science or whatever. And they're very rigid and very focused. And so they will look at something, a problem, they say, oh, it doesn't fit into this equation, nope. No, that's it, right? Whereas I took, I take a different stance. It may not fit into it, but is there a way without breaking the law, still be able to do something and still be able to be, be good for the, for? And when I make a decision, it's always that whatever the decision or make has to not only apply to this particular instance, it has to apply across the board. Because I represent, as much as I represent Digaword, I also represent an entire city. So because you go, if I make a decision and I open up in a Pandora box and I make a decision, it's gonna affect everybody else. And then everybody says, well, if she gets it here, why can't we get it over there? So I have to be very cognizant of that and say, okay, does that make sense? And will make sense right across the city? Oh, yeah, it makes sense, fine. But if it doesn't make sense, then I'm going, no, it doesn't work. That's how I make decision. But I think that all they want to see, most of the councillor, we get along, we all get along and we're respectful and we talk to each other. You go, you're the man, or whatever, we tend to call each other, hey, you know, Digo Man Tai. They got that Dino and whatever. And they tend to, we have not a rule, but an unspoken rule. It's basically, we respect the local councillors' view and decision most of the time, okay? So if it's in my area, all the colleagues is gonna respect me. Just as if it's in my colleagues' area, I will respect Hoise Otega because he knows his residents better than I would. Just like I know my residents in my ward better than they would. So that's how we work in all the Digo, Digo council.
Rebecca, a more question?
Yeah, I have one point of view that you are kind of artist oriented. So that's why when I drive in heavy seven, it's always attracted my attention. I cannot focus on my driving, that's your fault. And it's so busy everywhere.
That means that you have to get onto public transit, that's all.
I will try.
Okay.
Yeah, we, one of the things we did here as well is I don't, and because maybe because I travel, I've done so much train, many train missions and I've gone to so many different places. One of the things I really like is that architectural standard that we have. I'm very, at the beginning, you always see the very, the same old rectangle buildings or square buildings with the same bricks or whatever they use. It's just so tiring and it's so just boring. And because whatever you build, I say to people, whatever you build, it's gonna be built there for years. It's not built for one year or two years and you're gonna take it down, right? So we need to build with a foresight. We need to build with a vision that it's gonna last. Whatever material, the style has to last for a long time. So not something that I've been pushing for. In fact, Vaughan is the only city that adopted what we call the design review panel. So every arc, every piece of development that goes up must go through a design review panel. The design review panels is made up of all professional architects, landscape architect, planners, whoever it is. So these are people from all over. They come in, sit together and they, they have to do a presentation. They look at it and then they critique that. Whether it's, is this a right way of it? Did you plan properly to your neighbors? Did you plan properly from a park perspective? Did you, all those things, they take into consideration. Then the developer will have to go back with those comments and work on them and improve their design before they can come forward to, to our planning department for, for review.
Yeah, I heard the same argument from MP, because cost, cost this many guys. God, I gave him a moment landmark building, you look.
Yeah, we don't.
Yeah, we just have boxes, maybe more is cost effective.
That's right.
You look at other places like Shanghai, Beijing, or all the big cities.
Yes.
Very memorable women. I was learning architectural, right?
Exactly. And that's what I'm finding. And that is what I'm trying to do here in Vaughan. We want to get into that, that, that size so that we actually have really great landmark buildings that people go, wow, like it's that wow factor that you want. And this is what we want to see.
我都听讲了，听过话了，就是做 politician 呢，这个 environment 好 toxic 的. 点解咧就话会系即好啲 politician 好 busy 啦，因为你要开会啊，又要见 constituents 啊. Okay,咁你作为市议员可能好啲，你都会 live in the same city. 如果你是 MP 呢， sometimes 如果你是 Vancouver 的 MP，你可能发个 order，开会，send five days there and two days Vancouver. 所以通常 politician 做多一段时间之后咧，就有两个 problem. One is health problem, the other is marriage problem, okay? So 我问题就话，你点样去 save time for yourself, for your husband and for your family?
It's, it's, you know what? I think it's, it's the balance. You need to keep a balance in your life. So as much as, yes, work is very important and it depends. The other politician, they only go for meetings and that's about it and they don't do anything else. They are those ones. And then there are ones that are very responsible. I tend to be the more responsible. And I, in fact, I respond to almost all of the emails that comes into my, into my email box. In fact, when I first started, I used to, I have a, I have a habit that my mind, I have to respond to all the emails that has come in that day before I go to sleep. Because if I don't, I know that it's just gonna add up and add up and add up. And then you, and then you either gonna miss an email, an important one maybe, or you're going to, you're just gonna lose yourself because you, you can't catch up to it. So that's always been, so I'll give that to you, the first term, I would be answering. And I do, I work late, I go to two or three in the morning and I would be responding to residents or whatever. Doesn't mean that I have to answer right away, but whatever they write me, at least I respond to them. Whether, yes, I received your email, I have, I have not directed to so and so to look at it or I will look into it and get back to you. But at least it gets responded. Because I think residents, anybody will appreciate the fact that, oh, she did read all the email and she is responding, so she knows about all the problem. I think that is a huge thing. And so that's why I take time to actually respond to all of my emails, doesn't matter who. The problem is, I have now, I've spoiled my residents, in fact, because you know, with the social media that has come forward and everybody, well, everybody now tags you on the social media, on Facebook and everything, they ask you questions. So not only do I respond to emails now, I have to respond to social media. I have to respond to Facebook and Messenger and LinkedIn and Instagram. All of them, when they write in, I have to respond to all of them. So it is, it is time consuming. But at the same time, it gives me a real understanding of Kuredi situation. Why, what are they upset about? Come, at least I know, yeah, Yodi, Yodi, Yodi complaint comes and it makes no sense, okay? And it's nonsense. But then Yodi is very real things. And then because all you got九九二零呢, many of them are the same. So got these same ones, eh? I don't need to respond anymore. I give it to all go the assistant. I said, okay, you go and respond to this one or you go and do whatever. Because Gori Hai Ying is always the same sort of thing, right? Yeah, but any of the unique one, I still respond to and I still make that time to listen or to talk to them. But I have found that with social media, I, I'm spending a lot more time doing that. And on top of the fact is, I, I personally post every social media. So it's me, all, all hold all the colleagues, I, Hoidega assistant, not yet, I be, and I post. I actually take time and post everyone because everyone.
Take the job of marketing, marketing department.
Well, we do have, no, we do have a corporate communications people. They give us information, but I always tailor it to my residents, to my area. So I want them to understand that I do know what the, you know, and, and I give them that information. I find they, I think they find it more interesting when I put a personal touch to all the, all the social media, right? And they tend, I, you tend to get more response back, you know? Whether it's good or bad response, you still get response back, right? But that, but it is time consuming. But I think going back to you, like a question, Joseph, I think it's about the balancing of, you know? I think the first term was really tough. And I think even all these, if you talk to them now, they would say to me, their complaint would be the fact that at the time when both Mario and I were both politician, we were never home. In fact, all they sick, yeah, where do I, I meet him at events. I see my husband at events and we eat together. That's how we actually see each other, the time spent. But the, the people that suffered most was our kids. Because we wonder, yeah, we have the reliable nanny and whatever, but it's not the same. You know, when, when their friends have their parents, parents, friends take them to certain things, I need to rely on my friends to take them as opposed me because I'm too busy. So I do regret that part. But I think my kids are, are well versed and they understand. And so it's good and they, they appreciate that. I think they appreciate it more now than before because they also been involved with all the campaigns and everything that we do, that they are much more street smart in the sense they're much more knowledgeable in the political world in some of the, they hear the complaint. So sometimes they, they even laugh at the complaint, they go, really, mom? Somebody called you about that? They go, yep, that's right, you know? But they understand those things and they appreciate better.
The day you decided to be a politician, you have to be very sacrificed. You'd be ready to sacrifice a lot of personal times.
You do, yes.
During your spare time, do you have spare time? What do you do? Like, do you really get a time to, to see a show in downtown or can you relax?
And now, the first few terms, I didn't have that much of a free time because I, I'd spent a lot of time trying to do the best of my job. Now that I've been in here longer now, I do, I do let go on some things I've learned to. One of the things I've learned is to delegate to my assistants. At the beginning, you sort of earned the trust. And once you've earned the trust, now you can sort of delegate and know that things will be done without me having to worry about it. So because I'm one of these people that I worry, I want to make sure everything is done properly and so forth, right? But yeah, now I have some times, we try to, we have a cottage up at Collingwood. So sometimes we take a, take a few days up to just go up there because I, even though I am still, I still have my phone so they can still get in touch with me. But I feel I'm a little bit more relaxed because I'm away from the city, you know? The other thing is, when I do have time, I, I don't have that much time, but I do try to sit down and play the piano. I haven't played a piano, I, I don't get a chance to play the piano as much as I used to, right? And so when I do get a chance to do that, I sort of just immerse myself into music, which is really relaxing actually, because nobody's talking to you. Nobody is, is yelling at you, nobody is, you know, complaining to you, it's great.
Yeah, very focused.
这个我有个 better serious question. Also, my, my, your report card, what you have done for the last twenty years?
What have I done for the last twenty years? Wow, that's a lot. A lot of things, well, on top of the usual, you know, responding to complaints and that, I've been able to really grow Ogogo community. And, and I think, I was just talking to my assistant the other day, I said, oh, you know, how many parks did we open up? So within only Ogogo Wardlet, we've opened up about twenty-five parks, neighborhood parks in the area for the people to, to enjoy. I opened up a huge community center and the district park in the, in my area and currently working on, in fact, we just got the everything okay and we're gonna do an official groundbreaking on, in June, beginning of June. And that will be the second community center, district park and library that will be coming into my ward, which I'm very proud of on that. My biggest achievement, as you know, is the subway. Bringing that subway in is probably the biggest achievement anyone can really say because it's not only, it doesn't only affect my ward, it affects the entire city. And I think that's hugely important. I also have in my area, in fact, because of the berry line that goes through my area, I have both the Rutherford Gold Station and the Maple Gold Station in my area. And currently, I've been able to get them to, Rutherford is being expanded. They have a huge parking structure now in there. They have made huge improvement in the, in the station. On top of that, they are taking and it's called a great separated improvement, which means that it used to be, one of the traffic gridlock is if you're going across any rail, you have to stop because when the train comes, you have to stop and so forth. By doing the great separation, now are the cars goes underneath. So the rail can go on its own and the car goes on and doesn't collide with each other. So that's a huge improvement and it's gonna help from the traffic flow perspective. So we're really happy with that. Maple Gold Station, we just got the okay and we just approved. And we're also doing an expansion in the parking lot in that area. Because one of the biggest thing is people could not find parking. People were parking illegally and then they get tickets and then they call me and they go, oh, why am I getting tickets? You asked me to go to use public. So we work with metro links and we're doing that. On top of the fact is, we are improving the pedestrian bridge over Major Mac there. It's very, because there's no real sidewalk, that, that street is very narrow. There's no sidewalk, it's not safe. So we have a bridge that actually, actually the bridge is from the city hall, the Vaughan City Hall, across to the gold station. So people can walk safely across, which will also, it will also encourage, you know, even our, our own workers, employees to take the gold station, to take the gold instead of actually driving in. Because if it's so convenient, why not do that? So I, I've done a lot of work in trying to improve our traffic gridlock, as you mentioned. Yeah, traffic gridlock is a huge problem. I am also looking at doing some pilot project as in micro mobility. So bringing smaller buses to pick up people. So instead of them driving to the gold station or whatever, we have buses that can take you to the gold station and pick you and take you back, the closer one. I'm not saying like miles away, but around where you live, it's so much easier. Why take a car there and park and take up the space when you can actually just hop on the bus? They drop you off at gold station. When you come home, they take you back to your, your home. So I think those are things that we need to be more creative and open to those ideas. So those are things I've been really pushing for. And including the downtown, same thing, we're gonna be pushing these micro mobility because there's not that much parking spaces here in the downtown either. So we want to be able to still serve the people and take the people around. Whether if it's from, let's say, the Vaughan, the subway station, they want to go to Canada's Wonderland, we will have a bus actually taking them there instead of them having to, you know, to drive and find parking. Or to our newest hospital, as you know, Vaughan, we just opened up the newest hospital. It's the first smart hospital across Canada. And that hospital is at Jane and Major Mac. So Jane has now become sort of like Young Street. You know, Young Street used to be that spine. Well, Jane is basically that spine over here in the, in the western side, where we have all the various things that's going. That's why we have concentrated and doing developments, like even in Vaughan Mills. Let's take the Vaughan Mills there is hugely popular with the whole of shopping. Then I said to them, I said, well, okay, you have shopping. Why don't you build some residential and mixed uses so that people can actually, that can, you know, they live there, they can just walk across the street and then go shopping, right? So we need to wrap our heads around complete community. And that's what we're trying to do. We're trying to build complete communities in every area. So much of the, so when you get out, you don't need to get in the car, you can go and do your grocery, you can do your dry cleaning, you can go to bank, you can go buy your food, whatever the case may be. That's what we're trying to do. So I've been working on those things. What else? I am the chair of the Economic Prosperity Task Force in City of Vaughan. I have a huge interest in the, in the way our city grows from an economic perspective. And so I, I chair that. I'm also the vice chair of the Smart City Advisory Task Force. That's the mayor's Smart City Task Force. And really to implement smart technologies to help, help our residents to become more efficient and more effective. That's what we're trying to do. So you know, for example, we're trying little pilot project, for example. Hold us see, you hear people saying, oh, the, the garbage can, hi, the parks, so the overflow,好有损，好恶劣， the, 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 so now we implemented these garbage can that has sensor. So when it gets to a certain level, it will tell us, our staff, that it's gone to that level. Go out there and pick up the garbage now. So that way you will never have overflowing garbage, right? And then it also saves them from, instead of all these things that you. Go around and inspect every garbage can. They don't need to because they know when to go out. Because that indicator will tell them to go out there, right? So those are the type of things that we're, technologies that we're trying to implement into. So I, I played a huge role in that side. Uh, what else can I tell you? Um, we are, uh, what else have I done? Um, I've done a lot of other things from a, I guess, from a uh, social and cultural thing. As you know, I have the, I started the uh, Lunar New Year Celebration in Von. Uh, since I guess it was uh, two thousand and, I'm gonna say it was about two thousand and eight? No, maybe, no, two thousand and ten, I think I, I started that. And it's been going on, except for this COVID, this last two years, we couldn't do it. But it's been very successful, uh, bringing that culture into Odigo, uh, Long Sea. To allow everyone to really celebrate. And, and in fact, you see more uh, non-Chinese than Chinese going there to celebrate. Because they find it's very interesting. You know, you get all these activities and, you know, and get, get to eat the Chinese food and. See that the God of Fortune and all that and they love it, you know? So this is a way to really expand the culture in Odigo and, and understanding. Uh, so I did that. I also did a project called the Peace Tree. It's to really, again, teach people to be accepting of others' cultures. So that one project, I actually worked with Chief Labarche, who was the York Region Police Chief at the time. Uh, we did it for about five years, a really tremendous, it was based on a movie. It was a little very simple movie about a Muslim girl and, uh, and a Catholic girl. And they're in the same class. And as you know, kids don't, kids don't see color, kids don't see religion, kids just play because they are good friends, okay? But their parents do. And so the parents are always trying to stop them. So when the kid, the one, the Muslim girl. Wanted to invite the Catholic girl to come over to celebrate eat. The mom goes, oh, no, I don't think we, and, and, and she wants because it's just a kid, they wanna have fun, right? And so it really taught, opened the eyes of, you know, parents needs to be more open. To these type of culture and be more accepting. Because they find, or they think in their mind, they think that. By you going to somebody else's culture, you're gonna lose your own culture. Not true. That is not true. It's just adding more to your, uh, to, to your knowledge. And that's the thing that we want to do. And so we try to, we try to get that message across to a lot of the school kids. Uh, that, that project, we, uh, we got a lot of school kids involved and get them to understand and appreciate it. So it was a really good uh, uh, project that we did for that. Uh, I also do the Luna Gala, which is through the Autumn Festival, Luna Gala. Uh, we had two of them very successful, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and nineteen, and then COVID hit. So I've been asked a thousand times, we are gonna do it next year, this year election cannot do it. Next year, we're gonna have a huge Luna Gala, so watch out for that. Make sure you come to that one. Um, what else can I tell you? Um, I also said, I, I'm also a director of the uh, tourist, uh, Tourism Von Corporation. And also sit as a member of the Tourism Von Advisory Committee. So again, that's very important into helping Odigo, into helping Von to grow and to that, uh, to be, be. Be seen as a world-class city. So you need to put all those things in, in place. Um, in Odigo downtown, as you know, you've seen and right behind me, if you see that, where it says P W C. With that building underneath, P W C is already, already occupied. But the building underneath right now, it's not open yet, but it is, it's because of COVID. But there is a uh, library, we will have a V M C library in there. We will also have the Y M C A, one of the largest Y M C A is, is situated in the downtown area. As well, we will have what we call the Von Event Space. So it's very unique because it's not a recreational community center, it's actually space where people can rent. We have a recording studio in there for people to rent and use. We have dance studios in there, we have a cooking kitchen in there. To do cooking and demonstrations and all those things. And people can rent those space out to do whatever the, you know. Um, so it's really interesting and that hopefully it's gonna open up in, um. Hopefully, crossing our fingers, by May, that we will have that all open up for everyone to enjoy. Because I think the people that are living here now need, need those things. They need something to go because things are not all built out yet, right? So they need these type of activities to, to really bring people together to have fun. We're also working on a nine-acre park that is gonna be just west of where this building is. That nine-acre park is about as big as the uh, Central Park in New York. And that park will be consisting of a portion which is a passive park. One portion which is a um, active park. And then one which is sort of like a, um, oh, what's, what you call it? It's, it's a, it's, it's almost like a, um, what's the word for it? Uh, it's an area where you can have entertainment. You can use it as, for concerts and all type of things, you can have theaters, you can have whatever, that type of thing. And that's what we're gonna have. So one of the biggest things, as I earlier told you, is my biggest uh, project that I've been pushing since two thousand and three. It's been a very long uh, road, but we're slowly moving forward. It's the Performing Arts Culture and Innovation Campus. This is something that I've always wanted from day one, being music major. I want to contribute back something to Von. And because, because I appreciate that, I wanted to bring that in, but then I didn't want to bring it. Like everybody else. So you know, you've got Living Arts Center in Mississauga. You've got the Rosa Center in, in Brampton and Market Flado and whatever. Our center is gonna be different. It's not just, well, it's not just about showcasing big performances. It's also going to allow smaller cultural groups, community groups to utilize that space. For their own showcasing and whatever. But at the same time, we're also bringing the institutional part, so there's an educational component. We're bringing, I've had talks with um, many of the uh, um. Arts, I guess, so like the Royal Conservatory, uh, Banff, uh, uh, um, out in, um, out west. York University, O C A, uh, uh, Ryerson, all of them. And I say to them, I said, part of the reason because we have so much uh, traffic. People can get down there to get the things. My biggest thing when I based my decision was, when I was a, a kid. I was able to go down to Royal Conservatory for music, for lessons, for everything. Why? Because there wasn't that much traffic and usually one parent work and the other parents wasn't working at our time. Now, most of the parents, both parents work. So it's very hard for kids to be able to get that chance to go down to Conservatory to learn. But at the same time, the really good teachers at the conservators are losing a lot of really prominent uh. Good pupils because they can't get down there. So I said, why don't we do it so that we allow this, uh, this institution or whatever this building that we're gonna call, I, you know. It's gonna allow to bring all types of programs, whether it's from O C A, whether it's from York, whether it's from Royal Conservatory. But bring those programs here and to have them deliver here. So people up here and beyond north can come here to get that same sort of uh, skills and education and, and so forth. That was my thinking behind it and that's why I did what I did. And so, and they all love that idea and we're gonna pursue that uh, further now. So those are some of the things that I've been working on. I want our city Von to become the, the gateway, at the, the gateway to the arts. It's in the city of Von and we're gonna make it so it's very synergetic. So why I did this that every developer in this area that's building, I have told them that. I need you in your development, I don't care where, you must provide a space for the arts. I don't care whether it's for an art gallery, for theater, for film studio, for whatever the case. But something related to the arts must be in your development. Why I say that is because then you build a synergy around the entire downtown. So you have different things going on, people going in different directions for different, that, yeah, that's the reason why I, I, I. Started that. So those are some of the things that I have sort of, uh. I guess implemented into the, into our planning, into the things that we're doing. Uh, to help Von to become a better city. Um, I am working also in um, bringing in a production studio into our downtown. As well as a culinary training center. Those are a number of projects I'm working on uh, these days. A lot of these projects takes a lot of time unfortunately, but we're working on that. But the most important one right now that I'm working on is the Von International Music Festival. It is the first international music festival ever in Von and in York region. This will be coming in this uh, this uh, spring or summer in June. So it's uh, June tenth, eleven and twelve. We will be bringing in a, uh, a, uh, three days uh, of, of different showcase of different cultural music, everything. Everything from uh, Japanese drumming to uh, Vietnamese uh, uh, performance to Filipino. A marching band to uh, Chinese, we got the Chinese uh, orchestra coming in. We have all different type of, of, and then we also have a segment which is called the Rising Star Spotlight. We have the younger generations of rising stars that will be performing as well. So those are all the stuff that I'm working on right now.
Yeah, I think Rebecca and I should consider to moving to one, yeah.
Yeah, amazing. I, I always looking forward to an international music festival. Let's date on June ten.
Tenth, eleven and twelve.
Eleven and twelfth.
I will let you know for sure.
Have to be there.
Yes. Yeah, it is unfortunate, yeah, all it's easy to move, but all the lawyer, which is funny, and she's half Chinese and half Italian, and yet. She got it. Uh, she was driving through a drive-through at, I think, Tim Horton or something like that. And some guy yelled at her and told her to go back to her own country, that type of thing. And it's like, and all the lawyer doesn't even look Chinese. So that, that's, that's what I thought was fun. And then my son, the same thing. My son got it, uh, at, where he was working, same thing, they got that, said, I'm going like, really? So, so it's, it's crazy, but they do. So in fact, it does exist. And I've heard it also on other people that told me, uh, wrote to me. Um, it's very sad that this happens. It's sad that, yeah, instead of really understanding to truth, they take little bits of things and they make up their mind. You know, and, and they, they have this mind, oh yeah, it's, you know, because someone, someone, somewhere there says, oh, COVID came from China. So everybody thinks it's, it's Chinese, it's a Chinese thing, right? Um, it's sad, but I think that, and, and the one thing I did say to everybody is that. When these things happen, we cannot be a standby. We must take action. And that's one thing that I think. Horus, are they Chinese? Don't tend to do that because are they Chinese? We have a certain, um. Certain way that we do, right? We, we're very much more preserved, we don't want to. Horus, you know, even when we were growing up, our dad would say. But if we all keep doing the same, that's more later than there. It's just gonna go back instead of better. We need to step up. We need to voice, or they go, okay, when it's wrong, you need to speak up. And I think that's the one thing that, um, starting to, but the, the previous generation wouldn't do it. They won't do it because it wasn't in their system to do it. And they feel it's not the, uh, you know, uh, what, what's the. Something, some, some, you know, where they talk about it. It's, don't get involved with other people's business. It's other people's business, it's not yours. But that's not true because we all live together in the society, we all live in this community. And we do all have to step up and speak up, right? Um, and so I think that it has, and I think that because of the, uh, anti-black, uh, you know, and so forth. That has helped getting people to speak up a little bit more. And all they go, newer generation, meaning all they decide Lola, they tend to now speak up. They need to, they, they do tend to uh, uh, talk about, about it more. And they voiced their opinion more, which is good. And I'm happy to see that. But there's still a lot of people that, that, that are very ignorant, is what it is. I call them ignorant. It's people that just don't, uh, don't have the facts and they make conclusion, you know? And that's a problem that, that we have in, is a soci- is a societal thing, but we can't give up. It's funny, I had posted something just the other day and someone said to, uh, to me, they go, well, yeah, but you know, uh. Uh, it's such a, it's such a hard thing. Oh, uh, they go, it's such a hard thing, you know, what, what do you do about it? I said, well, you don't throw up your hands, that's for sure. And you don't just walk away, you need to do something and you need to take action, you need to speak about it. And have, have real meaningful discussion, that's what it is. And I think that's, that's the thing. But all they want to see. As much as we did, we didn't get it as badly as some other places that probably have more Chinese. We, as I said, don't have that, you know, I think. The percentage in here is only maybe ten percent Chinese, so, and it's spread across the city. So we don't have as much of that, uh, in here. I said, don't forget, I said, before politics, I had a lot of other things to do. Now, you might want to, but I think the way I'm going to is I want to finish off some of my major project. And I think one of the major project is of course, Odigo Performing Arts Center. And not that to finish it, but to at least get in place and get it started. If I know it's already in place and get it started, I'm happy and I know that, yes, it's gonna come. I, I've left a legacy of something. So. I, you know, yes, I, I've always thought about Toyota every so often. But I think that, um, once I have completed some of my major uh, uh, projects. Then I think I'm ready to turn to you. I'm not one of these, um, I'm not a, what do they call those? Uh, I'm not one of these politicians, just uh, uh, be there just for the sake of being there. Uh, because all, for me, it's very important that I accomplish something. And if I don't accomplish uh, something, then it's time for me to leave because there's nothing else for me to do. So, uh, but right now, there's just so many, so many different things I still need to finish up. So I guess I will still continue doing my job and as long as people continue to elect me, I will continue to be here.
That's great. We will consider to move.
Thank you. Yes, please do, please do.
Yeah, through this conversation, I know that you enjoy your life and you do have a life full of meaningful life. All right, so good luck for everything. All right, so give in touch, all right?
Thank you. Thank you so much, Joseph, and, and thank you Rebecca for having me here. I really enjoyed that conversation and I wanna congratulate you, Joe, Joseph. Because you started this at Toronto TV and I still remember when you came in, it was very small. And how we've expanded and expanded, so, and you've done well. So congratulations to you on your twentieth anniversary.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Before you go, uh.
Yes.
Or, uh, how you go Quebec, former and go Quebec Music Festival. Okay, and the, the secretary there, they told me that, uh, they used to have the Quebec Music Festival every year. And at the beginning, they tried to invite like small bands and musicians to play there. It's a two-month-long festival, it's in the summer. But later on, they changed the strategy, they bring in the big names.
Right.
Okay, like the staying, you know, international.
Yes.
Famous band. Then the audience come over the world.
Yes.
Right, so they make it big. Another example is in SARS, Hong Kong tried to like revive the Hong Kong economy.
Right.
Bringing, they're bringing the Rolling Stone.
Yes.
Ten, ten million dollars just bringing the Rolling Stone.
Yeah.
Right.
So, and, 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 and you're absolutely right. And this is, because this is the first year. First year is always the hardest year because you've got the smallest, but we've got the smallest budget.
Yes.
I am doing a lot of fundraising and corporate sponsor to, to get that, that people to donate. But we're doing it in a smaller way this time, but if it's successful, we are gonna go big. This is gonna become a signature event every single year and it will only grow. So each year we will grow, we will add a component to it and so forth, you know? Um, this year, actually, I do have someone, I can't tell you yet because it's a surprise. Surprise, there is a surprise group that I am trying to get into, uh, into this. And if we are able to get that, I think it's gonna bring a lot of people into. Say that again?
Woodstock in one.